Fourth to the council that they'll take action, Lord. Unfortunately, we live in uncertain times and our leaders today face challenges that we hadn't had to face for a long time, Lord. I pray for them to be wise and to be courageous as you set them on this path by granting them these positions they hold today. Lord bless them, bless Webb, Alabama, and in your son's precious name I pray. Amen.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Brandon, we can put you first on the agenda so you won't have to hang around and go through and listen to all this other stuff, so if you want to teach, you can go ahead and pray.
Yeah, I can do that. I want to set this up.
That's fine, that's fine.
It's going to take a second.
Wherever you are.
It's one of the government issued easels.
Yeah, okay. And for those that are sitting out here, this is Brandon White, he is the chairman of the Houston County Commission.
Yeah, good to be here. It's been a minute since I've been in these chambers. I appreciate what y'all do because I know firsthand experience, public service, and how is he, doors pop. Let's see, I'm going to put both of these, so you can kind of see them at the same time because it adds a little bit of information. I apologize to everybody here, I didn't print enough of these, but I'll hand these to council to have some information about what I'm going to be talking about. And again, I apologize for not, yeah, for not having as many as probably I needed. I've got, I'm going to need one, but I've got two more. Somebody wants to, yeah, somebody cares to have it. So, thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to come here to talk to the council today. So, I want to talk about a lodging tax. And so, this is not something that's been proposed, something like this has never been proposed to my knowledge for Houston County. So, and I think it's an outstanding thing if we can pull it off. It's going to be difficult because we're talking about a lodging tax. And so, tax is that, it's that four-letter word, you know, that T-A-X word that a lot of people just automatically, you don't like because who wants to pay more taxes? Well, the lodging tax, you're not going to be paying more taxes. When you go to Panama City, for instance, and you stay in a condo, excuse me, that real quick, so I don't trip, and you stay in a condo, or if you go to Birmingham for a medical appointment and you stay in a hotel in Birmingham, you pay a lodging tax. And so, you fund their recreational programs, their ball fields, their ballparks, their economic development issues. Sometimes you fund the school systems, tax, recreational taxes, I'm sorry, lodging taxes are used for all kinds of different things. But in Houston County, we do not have a countywide lodging tax. And you'll see in those quick facts that, well, I'm sorry, I don't think I put that in there, that's a different document, but in most major counties in Alabama, you have countywide lodging taxes. So, in Coffey County, I believe theirs is 4%, if I'm not mistaken. Henry County has proposed a 4% lodging tax countywide, that'll be on the ballot in November, same time I have to be on the ballot. Lee County, I believe, has a 2% countywide lodging tax. In Houston County, our countywide lodging tax is zero. Now, I'm not going to mislead you, we do have a lodging tax, but it only applies outside the city of Dothan. In Houston County, where are most of the hotels? They're inside the city of Dothan. Only two hotels are outside the city of Dothan. So, what we are proposing is to fund predominantly youth sports fields because that's what most people care about. And so, in our youth sports, we're funding, we've got set aside in this initial tranche of funding, $2.6 million for youth sports. And here's how that's going to be broken down, and this is not entirely clear, but $607,000 for a track and field complex in Dothan, which we do not have. This, a track is a growing sport. They have been talking about this. My children never ran track, I didn't run track, never had an interest in running necessarily, but a lot of kids do. And they practice in cow pastures and in church parking lots, but they don't practice on rubberized fields. And so, this is what we're proposing, to build a track and field complex. Dothan's going to front, or going to shoulder most of the burden, and we're going to contribute to that, with the idea being that if we contribute, okay, now every county student from every school in the county, public or private, can compete and practice on this track. I'm going to skip pickleball and come back to that. Moving on for youth sports, there's four places inside of Houston County where youth sports are played. And those places are Rehoboth, Cottonwood, Ashford, and Wixburg. So, the town of Webb, I'm assuming that if you have a child that plays youth football, you'd probably play at Ashford.
No, they play in Webb.
You play in Webb.
At Wixburg.
Yeah, at school.
Okay, so basketball, baseball, all that is in Webb?
Just football.
We have football, but our school's a theater school in Columbia, and they do their JV, they do their practicing on our football field at school.
We talk about school or youth?
It's just youth, it's like a touchdown club or a, whatever it's called.
Okay.
Well, if school has something to do with, they just let them.
They, they, we're football. Okay, I guess I never knew that before. I think Columbia also has a.
Well, they're together now.
Which together, it used to be separate. Webb and Columbia used to be separate. When Webb, when Columbia had their elementary school open, now our Columbia's elementary comes with Webb.
Got you, got you. Okay, something new there, did not know that. Well, these are the big communities that play youth sports year round, so football, basketball, baseball, cheer, softball, all these happen in these four communities. So, and the money in this proposal is following the children.
What about Columbia?
Columbia's on the list, not for youth sports, not for youth sports. Columbia is going to receive some funding, and they plan to use theirs to resurface, I'm sorry, to pave the road.
Now, I have a question because I was talking with Brandon White, and Brandon White told me if Cottonwood gets that money, now is this money going to the school or is it going to the town of Cottonwood? He said because the school also support the fields.
It depends, that's still a question to be answered. There's been some conversation. What I would prefer is for us to give the money to the town because the town's set, like you get audited every year.
Right.
So, I know I can write you a check and I can trust that that money's going to go where it's supposed to. All right, so let's talk about Wixburg and then we'll talk about Cottonwood. In Wixburg, there's no town out there. So, I trust the people at Wixburg, I'm not saying I distrust them, but I also know that you have someone looking over your shoulder, whereas a youth sports organization does not. So, when we're going to be spending taxpayer money, we want that money to be spent in a way that is legal, number one, and is also congruent with the intent that it's going to be raised for. So, so in Wixburg, we're going to write those checks for them, we're not giving money to the youth sports organization. There has been some conversation from Cottonwood that the youth sports organization would prefer that we do the same thing to them. It's more of a cognitive load for us, it's more work that we have to do, which is why we would prefer to write a check and just kind of be done with it. But we may end up doing that for Cottonwood. I think in Rehoboth, I feel pretty confident we're going to write that check to Rehoboth. And in Ashford, I feel like we're probably going to write that check to Ashford. I have not heard anything different from either one of those communities. Good question. So, this is, yeah, so $506,000 for youth sports. Someone asked me, they said, "Well, you know, why can't, why can't my town get $506,000?" And, you know, that, that town in particular does, does not have year-round youth sports. The money is following the kids. This is not a money, this is not a tax to fund towns, this is a tax primarily to fund youth sports.
And that's why I'm confused, why isn't Columbia?
Columbia does not have a year-round active youth sports organization.
They have baseball, football.
And basketball.
That's who, that's who I'm talking about.
They're not, they're not.
That's what I'm saying, they have, they have, they have a, we football team, it's what you say, it's all through the school, but this is not for the school.
Except Cottonwood now.
Oh, this is not for schools.
No, this is not Ashford's school. This is not for schools, this is not.
It's like we have, we just play ball at the ballpark. But we don't have.
But you're talking about funding little league baseball, right?
Not little league baseball in the citizens, so youth sports year-round, so you talk about baseball.
Well, what are these kids in Columbia, what are the kids in Columbia and Webb going to do? That's unfair, in my opinion.
I mean, I get where you're coming from.
I can, I can look, everybody wants sports, 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 but when you ride down the roads and you can't get out the road, get out the car on the side of the highway without waving waist-deep grass, then you got a problem. I'd rather have the roads cleaned, bush hogged, and cut ditches back. What's the problem? Ride the county, listen to me, ride Houston County roads, ride town Webb road, go ride roads from roads in Florida, see how many roads you got grass up here and you can't see the stop signs for trees growed out over them.
That's a, that's a different conversation, I can have that.
When, when you spend the money, they took more tales in Houston County, Dothan's already got two tracks, they got one, high, new high school over there, they got one, Dothan, oh, Dothan, Wayne won't be able to know, they got one at Ripley Stadium, they just put out a strip for turkey down on Ripley Stadium.
So, the, the tracks that you're talking about, the county kids don't play or practice on those?
No, because it's, it's.
Where you going to build it at?
Dothan plans to build.
Once built in the county. They already got, they already got, to build it in the county, everything got to go to Dothan, right? Build it in the county.
Well, isn't Dothan putting in part of the money?
Most of, yeah, this, yeah, this is going to be about a $4.5 million project.
Because most of the local, the local are all in Dothan, so I get it, I get that part.
But still, you still leaving out half the county. This, this, this side of the county does not never get nothing. Period. I've been living here for 35, about 40 years. District one, nothing.
I've talked with commissioners about that, he knows, he, these layer, I've talked with him about it, but, but I'm aware. I'll talk to you later about what we.
I'm through talking, I'm fixing, I'm fixing to put action in it. We pay taxes, we pay taxes, every time we go gas, they, we pay gas tax. Alabama's got one of the highest taxes in the country on gas. First we wanted to rebuild the road, right?
Yes.
Why don't we ride down the road with potholes, this road right up here, they, the county just fixed it today, they, about a ditch up here, right by, when you leave that, go up here to, right to the church. It's been washed up by the ditch for over two years now. Had, see, there wasn't no flagging, somebody drove a, a red bar post and put it over. String it, been up there for two years, county doesn't have it getting around and fixing.
So, county road or city?
County road.
I'd have to look, I'm just not aware of it. I don't know what else to take.
In, you should, you, in-kind service, what happened to in-kind service?
We do a lot of in-kind service.
In-kind service? We got trees growing up in the ditch over there, the man come over here and tell me, our school was causing the potholes in the road, that's county road. County pushed, maintained, county vehicle tearing up the road, county would fix it back.
Okay, I don't mean to, we're talking about this, let Brandon get through with this.
He told the man he going to come out here and look at it, but he ain't come out here. I don't know why he come out here to look at it. Did he do that to him in Houston?
All right, so, I don't remember where I was. So, we've talked about youth sports, and now let's talk about additional recreational opportunities. So, not every town has year-round youth sports, but we feel like we need to invest in as many of those towns as possible. And keep in mind, like, on the town of Webb, on this proposal, and these towns are broken down based on population. So, a lot of people have asked me, like, "What do you have against the town of Columbia?" They're only getting, well, I don't have anything against the town of Columbia, they're very thankful to have the opportunity to receive these funds, and they already have solid plans on what they're going to do with them. But the town of Webb, $121,506,000 is what we're going to propose in this initial tranche of funds that is not predominant, unless you have a hotel, none of this money is coming from, being generated from the town of Webb. But we are choosing to invest this money in town Webb to enhance your recreational opportunities because, at the end of the day, Houston County does not have beaches, we don't have a mountain, you know, we're not going to go whitewater rafting on the Chattahoochee River or the Little Chop Apache, but we have parks, we have children, and those children need safe and beautiful places to play, and so that takes money. So, that's why we're choosing to do this, and I want to raise the quality of life that we have all over Houston County. Now, some people have asked in this information that I gave you, like, "What about the towns that's not included?" For instance, town of Gordon is not included. Well, originally, the town of Gordon was included. I asked for a 1.5% lodging tax increase, and I was told the legislature would only approve a 1%. And like anything else, Mayor and Commissioner, you certainly understand you have a lot of needs and a lot of wants and a very limited amount of money, and so we had to cut some towns from this initial tranche of funds. We had to cut back on, on a lot of what we were going to do with youth sports and quite frankly, the money that we want to give to your town. But this is going to raise over half a million dollars per year on an annual basis. We're going to bond out this money for 10 years so that we don't have to give you an easily $5,000 or so a year that you could do something with, I don't know what you could do with that, but we're going to give you a check for $121,000 so you could do something real. It's, is it as much as you need? No, no one's getting as much as they, as they need, but it's, it's what we can do with 1% lodging tax.
And this is every year?
Half a million dollars every year. Now, this, this funding is not going to come through every year, we're going to borrow against, so in government finance, once you have a revenue stream, you can borrow against that money, you will borrow against that money for 10 years. Now, I, and I've explained this in some other places, these numbers are extremely concerning. What, what I don't want to do is that Mayor is come here and say, "I'm going to write you a check for $121,000 and have to come back, get this word passed and say, 'Mayor, you know, we went to the market with this bond, we borrowed the money, all I can do is $100,000.'" That, you would feel like you've been kind of used and lied to, and you would be right to think that. So, we could do more, I want to say that, we could do more, but I'm not going to sit here and promise you that we can do more. I know we can do $121,000. Could do more, I know we can do this. And it could be that, you know, well, definitely after 10 years, there'll be another opportunity to take out another bond. Now, I'll tell you, in 10 years, I will not be the chairman, that will be someone else's call to make. So, I get this question a lot, and I think it's unfair for me to answer this question, like, "Well, what are you going to do with this money after 10 years? Can we have a half a mil?" I can't promise you that, I'm not going to be here in 10 years to, to, to promise anything. So, that will be up to a future commission, and, you know, people like me, elected officials respond to public pressure, and so, you know, as you're talking to county commissioners in the future, when I'm no longer around, I'm back in business and doing private industry, you know, you will have your opportunity to get more money. So, I would hope that in the future tranche, Gordon could get a good chunk of money, the town of Magic could get, can get a good chunk of money. You know, once we get these youth sports needs sort of settled, you know, maybe they don't need as much money, we can spread it out to all the towns a little bit more evenly. And I would love to be able to do that, but, you know, the biggest problem that we have is in youth sports, is in that youth sports, and, you know, it's just, is it fair? I will tell you, it's not fair. Is this what I would like if I had complete control over how we were going to spend this money? No, it's not. But we have a bunch of people in the room, and you're trying to get some sort of agreement. It is what it is, as imperfect and as with all the warts that it has, this is what we could agree to, this is the opportunity that we have before us. And I think it's too late now to go back and start changing this because, you know, I know you probably, I'll say, you look at these other numbers and you think, "Well, I deserve more, we want more." I had, I'm not going to tell you where, but I had one community that they think they deserve, well, I'm not going to say they, I will say one person in that community thinks that that community deserves all of them. So, you know, you will never get two people that will agree on how this money needs to be divided up, but this is the opportunity that we have, and if it's approved, you're going to get, I'm going to guarantee you, a check for $121,506, maybe more, but I can guarantee you that.
What does it lend it on, which you can spend it on?
It has to be spent on recreation. Now, that's pertaining to the town of Webb. The, the towns that have youth sports have more restrictions than you will have, so like the town of Rehoboth will have to spend it on youth sports facilities. They can't spend it on a walking trail at a senior, I don't think they have a senior center, but if they did, they could spend it on a walking trail. It's got to be spent on youth sports. So, the town of Webb, you can spend it on youth sports if you have town, if you have, you know, fields that you want to improve, and then maybe one day you would be one of these year-round, you know, youth sports towns, but, but in the meantime, you could spend it on a walking trail for your senior, I'm not suggesting that, it would be up to the town.
So, they can be spent on anything to do with the recreation.
Correct. It cannot be spent on lease, it cannot be spent on the mayor's salary, it has to be spent on.
Even like refurbishing the road, the road, the area and everything.
The road and a park, correct, yes, yes, that would be acceptable.
The one thing we talked about is youth soccer being out there because they got so big in Dothan to try to pull some of that to Webb. That was one idea we had to, a lot of kids are going to soccer, they're going to travel balls, you don't get a lot of ball there, so that was one thing we was going to try to do, to try to get youth.
That's, that's actually a really good idea.
Those fields are packed.
Oh, yeah, they don't have it.
Those things are big.
I talked to a gentleman, a mayor, the other day, and we were talking about the possibilities for his town, and I know that flag football is a big thing, I think right now predominantly the flag league, and I don't really know a lot of those folks, don't really understand the sport that much, but my understanding is they play a lot in the church in Dothan.
Yeah.
And it doesn't have lights. And so, the mayor was like, "Well, what if we, we got a green field, what if we put up some lights and invited those flag footballers to start playing in our town?" Not necessarily, I think that's an outstanding, I mean, there's a lot of great things that you can do with this money, I think it's an outstanding opportunity. But, but to the, some of the frustrations, is it fair? It, you know, nothing will ever be fair, but this is the best that we can come up with.
This is only a one-time thing we'll get to 10 years?
No, no, you will get this money upfront as, as early as, I'm not going to say January, February, March, somewhere like that. It takes a little bit of time to borrow.
Come on, we're going to get it this time, in the next 10 years, or will we get more or is it?
Correct, correct, and, but I can't promise you what that will look like, I, I can't.
How often will it be?
It just depends on the future commission, and I know it probably seems like I'm being dodgy, but I can't promise you.
And the taxes are going to keep coming in every year.
Yes, they will, and so.
I mean, you can't tell how often the town will get them up?
Like, let's say my conservative estimates come true, let's just go with that hypothetical, then in 10 years, there will be another opportunity for bond. So, over that, so let's, so let's talk about what's going to happen between year one and that 10th year. You know, it could be that if this passes and we go borrow the money, that there's an opportunity to borrow more money than what I had conservatively estimated, and so maybe some of these other towns get more. I'm not going, I don't think we can take away, or we could do something to, we're, we're getting more money every year, we don't borrow more, but we have more money coming in and we can give out checks more frequently. That would be a conversation that we've had. And I know.
We don't know how many, how often we'll get them.
I, I can't, I can't prom, that, that will be something we'll have to work out with the mayors on what they would rather do. Would you rather have more upfront or would you rather have a, a little check here and there every year? And remember, I, I don't want you to take away from my comments that I'm promising you more money, and promising you more money, or I'm going to promise you money every year because there's other towns that are not included. So, before we start giving more money to the towns that are in here, I think we owe it to those towns to try to get them something.
I'll say, I used to live in Birmingham, and friends that had sports-age kids, they were coming down to Dothan all the time because Dothan has such good facilities, so it, it is going to pull tourists' money down as, as travel teams come down here.
It does, and there's other places that are, place in Millbrook, if I'm not mistaken, that they've invested several million dollars in their fields, so, you know, even the town of Dothan, city of Dothan, excuse me, is going to have more competition. You continually have to reinvest. You know, the one thing that I, I really fear, I fear two things that relates to this. I fear that people are going to go in the ballot box and see taxes, and automatically think, "Well, I don't want to pay any more taxes," so they both know, remember, you're not paying this. The other thing I fear is jealousy, is that, and, and this is the case in some places in, in some of these towns, you know, there's some people associated with those towns, they see somebody else getting more money, they think, "You know what, I deserve more money." And maybe they do, maybe they have a point. But if you defeat this because of jealousy, then you're really just hurting yourself. I mean, we're really just hurting ourselves because, remember, this money will be perpetual, it will be everlasting, there will always be opportunities for more money. And, you know, I, I don't, I think if this were to fail, I don't think it's going to come up again. And probably, and I'll, I'll be honest with you, probably what's going to happen, no, not probably, what will happen, it may be next year, it may be five years from now, if this fails, you know, the city of Dothan is going to raise the lodging taxes at some point anyway. And I don't think the town of Webb is going to get any money from that. So, you know, I'm fighting, I mean, I know Dothan is a good chunk of money in this, and I think it's fair, most of the hotels are in the town, in the city of Dothan, so they deserve, they deserve probably more than what they get, I'll be honest with you, but, you know, we have to, we have to worry about other places, and Dothan has things that town of Webb doesn't, and so what we're trying to do as a county is to capture some of this revenue, to spread it out a little bit so we can, because what, ultimately, I truly believe this, what's good for all of Houston County is good for the city of Dothan, what's good for the city of Dothan is good for Houston County. A lot of times, we're like, you know, we butt heads because we're jealous or whatever, that's not a good way to run a county, it's not a good way to grow a county, so those are things I worry about.
About having more questions?
Has the commission voted on this funding proposal?
Appreciate the opportunity to be here, I know a lot of things happening, I know y'all, seems like y'all have a lot of things happening. I'm honored to serve you as chairman, I know I'm not going to make everybody happy, I learn that every day, I've accepted that a long time ago, but I'm doing the best I can, and again, you know, even if you don't like me, let's think about the children, let's think about the great things that we can do. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, now, I need a motion to approve the minutes on the regular council meeting on August the 26th, 2024, and the pre-meetings on September 16th, 2024, is presented. Do I have a motion? All right, motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next thing on the agenda is the council to approve financial statements for August 2024. Do I have a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, council to approve the budget to October 2024 to September 2025. Do I have a motion? Did you say?
Yes.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
No, I got a question.
Okay.
Is, uh, is it done? I mean, is it ready to be photographed?
Yeah, you can go ahead and vote, there's such a gal, y'all want to put it off if you would like to.
I know, just because we haven't really discussed it, I, I've stepped, as long as it comfortable, it's been done.
Yeah, James is already here getting it, that's why I just hear the.
I didn't see.
And you can always revise it at any time, not only date it, if we see that we need to change something later on, you can, you can.
Well, that's why I asked you a question, to set you.
Okay, so that is, oh, yeah, just. All right, the next thing on the agenda is the approval for Augusta to go to elections school on November the 19th to 22nd. Cost of the school is $265. Um, just don't do wire.
I'll make a question.
Our elections go out, maybe we'll, in fact, morning, may I motion, do I have a second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, next thing. Okay, I need to let everyone know about, I had Augusta call Jody Solomon with Prestair Engineering to get started on the bid for the town hall. You know, they told us not to bid, then they told us to bid, then they came back and told us to, you know. You know, they told us not to bid, then they told us to bid, then they came back and told us to, you know, so to keep the town out of trouble or whatever, we bid it out, so, oh.
My only question, you make one contract, everyone bid for everything we need to do here.
What will happen?
It's gonna cost you more to do that.
Yep.
And that's what we discussed. So that, that.
That's a fact, Jody, we'll get the bids together, it'll be, it'll be for the newspaper, once we read the newspaper, the bids will come in, and y'all will open the bids and y'all will decide. And whoever that person is, they will be.
How long are we gonna run this?
Yeah, two weeks.
They, they don't, they have a.
They have, Jody will be there. It's usually like.
That's everything we discussed.
Yeah, everything, just like it was, it's all for you.
We just wanna make sure we get all in there, but I don't have, I don't feel, kind of.
Well, when we get the bid, just like, if we do, we can do what we did that other project.
Yeah.
Magic. All right, um, what, yeah, I know, it does, just fill the gears, did I add? Uh, water department, uh, Bill Thomas?
We've run four million, one hundred and thirty thousand seven hundred gallons, we sold three million, three hundred fifty. Three, uh, two, three million, six hundred fifty thousand, three hundred fourteen gallons, were water loss of ninety-five thousand gallons from fire lakes from flooding. We had a water loss of ten point two percent. We had five new accounts, we finalized seven, we had one new meter put in, and we had five repairs. And, uh, let me say, we, uh, did our final walk-through on the ditch situation, it should be done, and, uh, we just gotta get the kind of thing going now, molding, we needed, but, uh, so far, you know, it ain't.
Talking about, probably.
Yeah, well, so far, for, with the rain and stuff, what we've had, it's, it's, it's worked very good.
I think we're gonna get some out of it.
Yeah.
Okay, um, police department, Chief Hall?
Uh, we, uh, answered two hundred and eighty-one calls last month, we've got a hundred and fifty traffic stops, and we've got a hundred and fifteen citations. We have one wreck and seven repairs.
And while we have people out here all to go, our total monies collected for the month for our court system was sixteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty cents. And then a note came in from John Rogers that does the state payments, that was five thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars in due to center. So, uh, and what went, the total that went to Gemma Fund was ten thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars. So our little court is, um, which Ben can tell you.
It's busy.
Yeah, it's bad, it's a wall, wall, so.
We also have the boat, the rescue boat for sale, not good, a little reserve of thirty thousand.
That's what I was telling you, this is your name, I guess that's it, then you got one for sale. All right, fire department, um, Chief Jamar Iden?
Yeah, Jerry's got a call over there, we had five last month. That was total five, right, about one garage, one wreck, and we have three neutralized. Yeah, um, also, got rid of an ice board today, I don't know if y'all noticed or not, that truck isn't sitting out there anymore. We sold it, and I had it hauled off today, so.
I'll try.
It went to almost Southern Junction, individual bought it. Um, another thing to do with the upcoming possible hurricane weather, whatever we're gonna have, is, uh, you know, we're here to do what we gotta do. Uh, in the event that, you know, we have trees down, stuff, we'll get the roads cleared as quick as possible, you know, with our, and power lines and everything else, and, uh, the only problem we have is, and y'all know it, I hope it's in the budget with the repairs, the electrical box by there, we won't be able to run the generator because of that electrical panel back there.
What we talked to them about, they, they.
Have they done some work to it?
No, not yet, but, um, they're, that's in the.
In the budget, in the proposal, yeah, and that's fine, you know, it's just, it's been an ongoing issue for a couple of years, when we found out there was a problem, but, um, you know, we do have other generators, we can make, do what we've got, we just want, the building itself won't have power, if, if we end up an outage. Like we always do, we'll, we'll work around it and make it all happen.
And if there's anything y'all need, let Jim know, I mean, the town can get you Gatorade, your water and stuff that y'all need, something to eat while you're up here working or whatever, let Jim know, and, uh, for y'all in the fire, I mean, the, uh, police department, y'all.
We appreciate that.
So, that's the least we can do, though, you know? I'd like to run chainsaw for you, but I think I could do that.
You can hold a flag, bud.
Y'all keep those roads clear, 'cause when we heard the hurricanes coming, I said the same thing you did, Sheree, that baby's gonna. Y'all heard the hurricane.
You know, man, if it does, we'll get you there, don't worry about it.
Keep them, I've been fifty-two clear, so we can get to that hospital.
We had hurricane Michael, we kept, as soon as it was over, we had the roads clear here before any other. We followed Jamar around that big piece of wood, and he got and pushed every tree out, the roads hit him, that's all it takes, and we, we had it done. I mean, we were completely blocked in here, we couldn't even get out of town.
Yeah.
But that, but that was a gift for us right there.
And senior citizens, do you have plans?
I do, for congregate meals, two hundred and eighty-six, homebound meals, three hundred and seventy-four, and four hundred and eighteen units of transportation.
And before I ask for any public comments, I will read this to you, that, um, uh, from the Houston County Commission, it says, the Houston County Commission has completed the budget process for year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. We are pleased to inform you that your appro, appropriation for the coming year will be ten thousand dollars. Normal distribution of funds will be made in four payments throughout the year, with first payment occurring in November, and subsequent payments occurring in January, April, and July. If you have any questions, you can reach me at six seven seven four seven four three, Peter Cobre. Which I'm not, the town's getting that, so, now, any public comments?
Y'all talk before I do, yeah.
I know y'all probably don't, some of you know me, my name's Carl Trish, I live over on Noel's Drive, and I'm sick and tired of the inaction of this council and this mayor. I have talked, and I have talked through the years to the city manager that's been here. And I talked to Ms. Brittany about it, I talked to Ms. Stacy when she was here. The ditches on our street, I paid this man probably a thousand dollars now, over the course of like ten years, to fix my driveways, and they're backwashed out again, because you guys won't do nothing, okay? The, the chief has been down, he actually trimmed trees that are growing in the ditches, and they've been there for years, because they're not this big around, they're freaking this big around, they've been there for years.
And it ain't just no old drive, turn right here, take a left on Kirkland Street, that's a shame, you gotta drive to the post office, and, and the week is taller than the season, you can't even see the stocks, and when you come back out, and the post office comes in.
Our plea is told as they could, they, they weren't gonna do anything with it, and I just talked to Brandon on the way out, Brandon's gonna eat a chicken tomorrow, and get back with me. Yeah, because I'm telling you what, 'cause I told him, I said, we, I went over there with a backhoe and tried to do it, and the trees are too big, it was. Yeah, 'cause the next step is my attorney, okay? 'Cause like I said, I, I've paid this man quite a bit of money to fix my driveways, and they're washed out again, you can ask him. How many of you have ever been on Noel's Drive?
Ride down it.
Ride down it right now, how, how long ago was it you were on Noel's Drive?
Couple of weeks, actually, when, when I found it, when.
So you've seen all the trees, right?
As far as time has ever been on it?
No, sir, no, sir, but I didn't know what I had.
The, the address is three seventy-three Noel's Drive?
Well, it's the whole road.
But it's the whole road.
You turn on Noel's Drive, the shoulders need clipping from one end to the other, so the worst.
The ditch is on the other side of this.
The ditch needs to be cleared, you know?
The ditches on the other side of the street from me?
If you come by my house.
Are all plugged up. This last two rains?
We have to, we have to, uh, we have to put a request, that's what we got.
That's what I hear every single time.
The town will come out there, we can't do that.
But if we can turn it in, then it's.
Yes, too, Jerry, y'all used to have the equipment to do it, but you, yeah, you, y'all had, y'all had a, an arm cutter that cut bushes.
We rented that thing one time, cut bushes.
Y'all tell me y'all bought, y'all owned it.
We rented.
The chief told us that, uh, you guys used to have one, you sold it, because you had no money that could run it.
But it wasn't cutting trees, it was cutting.
Well, if y'all were capable of cutting, we wouldn't have trees.
Like cutting trees, it's just brush.
Right, but if, if it could, there wouldn't be no tree. Not, if they would've got some ditches out, they used to cut the trees, spray round them, when it could, they could cut, they sprayed it, it was rounded. The mosquito truck used to come through there, they don't even ride through here no more, what would pay taxes for?
But I'm just putting, all of y'all I notice, that if I don't hear something real, and I mean real soon, the next one y'all are gonna hear from is my attorney, because I'm spending money and spending money, and y'all ain't doing nothing.
And the jobs are.
Do you know what your jobs are? I've got a printout of what your jobs are, and, and I'm gonna put you on notice right now, next year I'm running for mayor. Just so everybody knows that, because I'm tired of this. You know, I've been here eighteen years, the only change I've seen in Webb is a dollar store and the corner store up here that John Downs bought, which is now his cafeteria. Other than that, I haven't seen any positive change here, our streets have gone straight down. All the ditches in this town need to be cleared out, and the, the grass on the side of the roads are so tall that it's a hazard, even coming out your driveway. But every time anybody says anything, this is what, what we get. And we're paying your salaries by paying taxes, and we're just tired of it. So I want all of you to know that you're gonna start doing your job, 'cause you're gonna be held accountable. Because if I run, I'm gonna have people to run for all of you places, too.
Can I give you two phone numbers to call?
Sure.
Three, three, four. I got it. Three, three, four, six, one, eight, eight, four, one, two.
Six, one, eight?
Eight, four, one, two.
Eight, four, one, two.
That's your county commissioner for this district, if they have the equipment.
It ain't, it won't be no good, let them talk to it.
And you let him too, and he has an election coming up.
We already threatened it.
No, well, he, they run.
We vote for him, but they want people against him, and Dothen's gonna vote for him than we are.
That he has to run in the district?
We don't, we can't, we can't do nothing, just like I told you, I've been living in District One since nineteen seventy-nine, and there's nothing, since Wally Yoston, Wally Yoston didn't do nothing, we have never had nothing done, it's always Dothen.
One, one more.
I have that same first, first frustration, I know other people here in Webb have, I've talked to other people, but you know, you, y'all get upset when we tell you that, but that's the proper steps, is to contact the county, we send that paperwork in, but they don't do it, we can't make them do it.
But, but my thing is.
You have equipment.
No, we don't.
We used to have rail motors.
You, you guys, you guys have a, a, a track hoe. Bring it down there and dig the, the, the trees out of the ditch to open it back up again.
It takes them up too big, that bit.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna play more back.
Or that one, that little, that's good, we, it won't pick them down.
You bring it down, and I'll show you how to do it.
I know how to do it. Like, you don't need to knock them trees that size, you gotta have something to top them with. Yeah, it ain't tall enough, yeah.
But I'm gonna talk to Brandon, chief, the same way, till I'm blue in the face too, about our commissioner, and.
Brandon Slick can't do that about him.
No.
Brandon Slick, just like him, he's out for his pocket, and that's evidently, we can't do anything about it either.
Maybe it's time that you take some of the taxpayer money and hire somebody to come and take care of. Our road doesn't belong to the county, it belongs to Webb.
Right, the town, they, they plenty of contractors out here that got equipment that push hogged roads every day to city of Dothen.
I, they, they hard contractors out. Out our ditches.
They cut the circle, until they took it over, 'cause the state wouldn't cut it. The state quit cutting the circle, the city of Dothen cuts the circle, and they were banging into the city of Dothen, but until they could get their approval from the state, they had to go through a contractor to keep circle and stuff cut. You know, you wanna play with it all week, I used, you gotta room with them, you gotta play with them, baby, you gotta pay, people, people can't, as well as the older community, people ain't, this ain't a lot of young folks living with, people ain't able to get out there and cut their ditches and keep them clean, which ain't our responsibility to cut the ditches and keep them clean. Y'all don't look to the water meter.
If you come down my road, and you'll see, I keep my ditches clean.
I do, too.
But that ditch before me, uh, we just bought that property just last year, but them trees were already grown up in that ditch. Yeah, they're, they're huge, they're big trees.
It's been cut, probably ten years ago, maybe, the last time they come through there, but the town of Webb used to have bushhogs, they used to run bushhogs up and down the road. Ain't that right, Mr. Jerry? It, you know?
About ten years ago.
It, it, it's not, it's not that hard.
It's a lot of power.
I, I remember, you can go up and down there, it's not that hard, you know, and.
I mean, I realize it's hard to get good help now.
And, and you know, I keep, you know, I like for the commission, the property behind me that y'all bought with, come with the cemetery. I'd like to get that part right behind me, if y'all consider selling it, too, I don't know how much it is, but see, that's another thing with, when I was told, when it was turned over to the town of Webb, they were so upstanding citizens, they ain't calling no names, told them it was gonna stay cut and cured. I'd come down here, ready to change, get it cut, it'd be way up, you know? And, uh, you know, it pisses me off, if somebody tells me they're gonna keep something clean and they don't do it. I'm, I know you did, but you know, y'all took the responsibility on, y'all took the cemetery. Right?
I don't know the stuff.
You don't know what I'm talking about?
Okay.
She does.
So Morgan, you're, you're on the council, but you know nothing about that?
You don't know nothing.
About keeping that back part clean?
Yeah, they were clearing it.
I know they cleared it.
Yeah.
But I don't know nothing about, I ain't gonna say nothing, I didn't know what you would do, but man, it lives right over here, so we will keep it clean. Well, I told you, but I know that, I told you, I ain't gonna do it.
You know?
Go come here, see y'all that.
Who of y'all aren't familiar with the federal government's, uh, C A K N V immigration program? Y'all? That was my only question, honey, you can go.
I'm about to tell you a little bit about it. Uh, but first, before I really get started, uh, I just wanna say that everything I'm about to say is not out of hate for what's in front of me, it's out of love for what's behind me. Okay, well, I'll repeat that, it's not out of hate, it's out of love. I don't really wanna be here today doing this, um, but unfortunately, this is just the reality of, of the situation in our country, where we are, y'all know about it. And as a father, I, I just have to, you know my two little girls, how beautiful they are, and, um, if you won't heed these words, to take action for yourself, or for your own families, or for me, take action for those two beautiful little girls. Um, because those two girls are gonna have to grow up under the fallout of your action or inaction now. So, anyway, Bo and I, we went to that meeting in Enterprise on Thursday. Um, you know, we were hoping to get information on what's going on over in Enterprise, and Geneva, and around the state, and I sent y'all some articles about Silicon Valley and other places. Um, unfortunately, uh, as I suspected, it was mainly just a pressure release foul, they did have a guy there, uh, by the name of Jay Palmer, who did provide some good information on, on kinda what's going on, but, uh, I don't know if y'all saw the news, uh, the police chief just said, there's not a problem. just said, "There's not a problem," after we sat there for.
Got gas, looked real hard.
Yeah, after we sat there for almost two hours listening to people say all the crimes that these people are committing in their town, then the police chief gets up and says, "No, no, that, that's not happening." But anyway, okay, so the CHNV program, they're coming in under this program. CHNV stands for Cuba, Haiti, Nicaragua, and Venezuela. Every month, the U.S. flies in thirty thousand, they claim, but it's probably a lot more, people from these countries every month into Miami. They're then bussed up from Miami, which is why a lot of them are appearing in Alabama, where that first stop up the road.
Go to Enterprise. Go to Enterprise in Elton and New Brockton, it's, it's real over there.
They did, they done.
Yeah.
They did, they got new bad trees, but.
These immigrants, they require sponsors, and the sponsors are then given blank check loans from the federal government. They say, "How much money do you need? Here's a loan," and they're forgiven, just like PPP loans were. So it's, it's just money.
It's, it's not loans. They were never paying, but.
Yeah. There's no limit to the amount of people a single sponsor can sponsor, and the people coming in are barely vetted, if at all. They only vet a small percentage of these people, and it's not a very stringent vetting. They're then granted employment authorization documents, or an EAD, and have temporary protective status through the Department of Homeland Security, TPS. Finally, every month we wait to take action, thirty thousand more are gonna show up, so we need to take action now before the problem is too big for us to manage. The clear message from that meeting was that the state and federal governments are not going to help, so we're on our own, and we gotta figure out a solution on our own. So, I don't know how familiar y'all are with Haiti and the culture in Haiti and Haitians in general, so I'm gonna give some facts. All of this I found on Wikipedia and the United Nations, and y'all, this is what I say, I'm not, this isn't out of hate, this is out of love. Some of this is shocking.
I think they, like devil worshippers.
Well, that's, that's one of the points. That's one of the points. Some of this is shocking. I'm not saying this to be hateful, I'm just so y'all know how big of a problem it is. These are people we don't want in our community. Haiti was founded when black slaves revolted and slaughtered all forty thousand white French residents on the island. Slave owner or not, they killed them all. In twenty twenty-one, they killed their president, and gangs have ruled the country ever since. This is from Wikipedia. This is in the deep, deep dark of the web, I'm getting this from official sources. Gangs have ruled the country ever since, and many wealthy individuals such as doctors are kidnapped by these gangs for ransom money, and if they don't get the money, they kill The Haitians have completely deforested their side of the island of Hispaniola, it's Dominican Republic in Haiti, the island of Hispaniola, and hunted most wild animals to extinction. The U.S. has given Haiti over twenty billion dollars in aid since twenty-ten. Remember when Trump was in office and Congress wasn't giving him ten billion dollars to build the wall? Well, we've given them twenty billion to one country. And this, what you said, fifty to eighty percent of Haitians practice voodoo to this day. That's the majority of religion in Haiti, voodoo. So, given this information I provided, I'll now read you two Bible verses and give you the mayor, the council of Webb, a charge. First Bible verse, John ten, this is John ten eleven through thirteen. By the way, both of these, Brother Danny talked about this week, yesterday got in my mind. John ten eleven through thirteen, "I am the good shepherd," this is Jesus talking about himself. "The good shepherd gives his life for his sheep. But a hireling, he who is not the shepherd, one who does not own the sheep, sees the wolf coming and leaves the sheep and flees. And the wolf catches the sheep and scatters them. The hireling flees because he is a hireling and does not care about sheep." Second Bible verse, Matthew five fourteen, "You are the light of the world. A city that is set on a hill cannot be hidden." So this is my charge to you. I call upon the town council and mayor of Webb, Alabama, to take action to protect our community. I call on you to be good shepherds of the people of Webb, and not run or shirk when you're called to take action. I call on you to make Webb the city on the hill. Don't fall asleep on me, Mr. Jerry.
I ain't going crazy, I'm looking.
I call on you to make Webb the city on the hill, the shining example that other towns facing this challenge will look to for answers. I didn't wanna charge you to figure, to figure it out and not offer any solution myself, so I have a proposed ordinance here, drafted, that I suggest as a solution to protect the town of Webb before the problem arises. Now, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know if this is even doable, but it will solve the, it will solve the issue effectively if it is doable, if we can implement it. I ask that even if what I propose for something similar, or it is not doable, that you do take action to figure it out and solve it now before it's a problem. So, protect your sheep, the residents of Web, of Webb, Alabama. So, I'll hang out in the proposal. This is an ordinance.
What can they do, Dan? What can you do? Oh, you have to check in home and sleep, I don't know.
Wish you liked it here.
On a little more, something else I think is gonna end up being important. The other day, it was obvious in Enterprise that people had concerns, and they had attempted to express those concerns to the authorities, and they were basically ignored. And part of the purpose in Enterprise was to establish like a community hotline, because this is coming. I mean, it's already here, it's coming, and it's not just people from Haiti, it's, it's, you know, we've got a federal government that's really trying to just subjects, steal from half of us to subjugate the rest of us, and that's, that's what's going on. And, and we've got to have some way of holding our state government accountable for these things that are happening in places like Enterprise and New Brockton, these crimes that are being reported, and nothing's being done about it, and the police chief gets up there and says, "Oh, no, I hadn't seen them," you know, and I think at some point, we need to consider some sort of community, and this would be more your specialty, I would love to hear your thoughts on it at a later time, but some way for us to, to sort of funnel the details of the things like this that are happening, that we can hold our state officials that are going to Washington, hold them accountable, and make sure that they at least are provided with information.
It's just like the state of Florida, where the son heads made a squatter law illegal in Florida, where all other states is legal. So you got, you got to put, the legislature, you just got to.
But the more local, I feel like, the more local it is, the more easy it is to hold people accountable.
And once it gets here, it's too late.
And it's, is it.
What's that be like, would go to Broadway and, oh, Donny Testane, which Donny, that's part of his area over there anyway, isn't it?
Yeah.
Or maybe talk to Tuberville and Barry Moore.
They were both supposed to be there, they're not, they don't show up.
Candy bread, Tuberville, and Moore were supposed to be there.
And they sent people from their, from their campaigns, whatever, administrations, and nobody said a word.
We've got our law enforcement, so they must govern the state next month with the attorney judge.
Well, every, every month we wait, that's at least thirty thousand more.
They come first week in.
So it's something we need to deal with now.
That can be something I can ask you and we can go about.
We just gotta be careful we don't open ourselves up to a discrimination lawsuit.
You don't, you don't.
I'm not, I'm worried about that at all. No, we can't.
We can't pass any laws.
It's not even a state law now, it's government.
I think there's gonna come a time where the federal government is, is gonna see less relatives. They have, they live with so many people in, they, none of it, and we need to hold, we need our community to be a little more tolerant.
Well, I, I want a solution before that's a.
I know, but I, I oversee.
They here on November, November and May.
Yeah, they, I'm gonna tell you, if, if, if November the fifth don't put out this one, you're gonna.
It wasn't, I don't believe it.
I don't believe it.
Yeah, you're gonna see world war free. Trump, Trump made a lot of promises.
And we all need to build same.
I don't vote for Trump, but he made a lot of promises the first time around that didn't come true. Even if he had the best intentions.
He killed more of his problems than anybody else.
Okay, I don't think it wouldn't go on anything he said.
Exactly, Washington's gonna fight him.
And, and he.
That's just like, if you run for mayor, you go out there and tell everybody you're gonna do this, but these are the ones here that make the decisions. These are, you know, um, that's.
Anyway, thank y'all for listening.
But I'm, I'm with you on the, I, you know, I've got grandchildren here, and I live here, and I don't want them around me either.
And if there's anything I can do, I'm pretty big fan, but I, I'm gonna take action to protect my family, so if y'all figure out something that I can do to help, and let me, I'm free to.
I'll do some calling. I'll call, uh, Percy, and that's Tuberville's man, that, yeah, he usually gets back with me when I call VMP. I'll call him and say, "What, we had some postal issues," and he got right back with me on the postal issues.
Even on the second assassination tip on Trump, the governor of Florida's keeping it from Florida now. Yeah, they turned it over to the FBI. He blocked it from coming here, and that's a good thing for them, right? We might actually find out what happened, what happened, that'd be good.
Once I think, just from listening, that housing code enforcement is a big one, because you're having, you know, fifteen, twenty people living in a two-bedroom apartment in Enterprise. So, I guess to anticipate that.
That we could do.
That's something that's already on the books that you can enforce.
Yeah.
Yeah, that kind of.
Right, well, they're, they're not.
It won't be hard to do.
They're not doing it over there because it's not the same group of people everybody, it's the same house, but they'll bus them in, they'll stay for ten days, and then they'll leave, and, oh, they're gonna, well, no, it's, but it's.
You know, I think.
There's been twenty people, you know, twelve people across the house for forty days.
Yeah.
There's something, there's something that could be done about that over there.
I was in Birmingham a couple months ago, and there was two tour listers, slammed full of them, and they were inside the Lewis truck stop, and couldn't even check it.
They're bringing five and six a time.
They were hundred and fifty inside its door, checking out.
That's five or six buses.
Buses, five a time, people, yeah, at a time, with nobody picking them up.
That makes you not even gonna go to Walmart and shop now.
And I thought about, wait, is that, is that, you know.
Well, we're gonna have to get creative, because the message was.
We'll get, we'll get all those ordinances and see what we can come up with.
That wouldn't work.
Trying to, huh?
That wouldn't work.
No, we can't, uh, but we can work on those ordinances.
Start discussion, man.
Start making it harder, you know, for people coming in, and, and, and is what we gotta look after is our low, uh, monthly income and these trailer parks, and that's what we've been fighting all along, is we're trying to fight trailer parks coming in, but it's.
Sponsors are buying the real estate and then renting it. So we're not, so this is real quick, they're not even paying the immigrants. Are y'all aware of that? That there's staffing agencies, the staffing agencies that are bussing them in, all the ones getting the check from the chicken plants, and then they're paying these people like five dollars an hour, charging them for a two or three-hour bus ride to work every day one way, and then inflating their rent prices, and using that money to buy the house.
You can't receive where they.
So then, then when you go to the landlord, the landlord's the sponsor, who sponsored fifteen hundred people to come here.
So that's why I wrote that ordinance like that, because it's the target, is to stop, you're really stopping the sponsors more than anything.
I'm not trying to sound mad at anybody, I just, I'm just kidding, you know. We agree with you, but we're laws out there.
Yeah, I'll do some calling, I will do that and see what I can come up with, but, and I'll give you Tuberville's phone number and Barry Moore's, and, but that's what it takes. You all can sit there and, but call them and tell them, because, you know, the more people they call, the more they're gonna say, "Okay, these people are, they're tired of this." I'm surprised Enterprise hadn't busted already, you know, trying to get up with Barry Moore and letting him, you know, but.
If he had been there or not, I've not seen, uh, I've not seen that many people around here in one place that mad about a specific subject.
There were.
Hundred, hundred people back in that building. And they didn't show you that on the news, they just showed, saying, "Oh, well, it's just been blown out of proportion."
That's what I heard on the news. I said, "Well, maybe it's not so bad," because, you know, they said, he said, "No, there's, they haven't been doing anything illegal or."
Yeah, don't believe in lying.
Three, three, four, three, eight, nine, ten, twenty-one, Barry Moore's phone number.
All right.
Temperature was high.
Three. Three, three, four, three, eight, nine, ten, twenty-one.
And I had a Zoom call scheduled with a Haitian missionary today, but I, I don't know what happened. I talked to him on Saturday, because I wanted to hear from, all the things I just told y'all, I wanted to hear from somebody that knew about it really firsthand, and I intend to get that information later this week.
Tommy Tuberville's cell phone number is eight, zero, six, seven, seven, eight, six, six, three, seven.
You got that in my shirt, my finger's going.
Eight, zero, six, seven, seven, eight, six, six, three, seven.
Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a little adjournment.
Can I have a second? All in favor?
Nah.
Gee, is that possible?